Y'all ready?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Appreciate everyone being here. Thank you to Ms. Allen and Superintendent Riplinger. Is he here? Yep. No? For having us, but I hope everyone had a happy new year. We'll get started with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the audience of any citizen? Or is there any citizen comments? Anyone here that wants to speak? All right, we'll move on past that to the approval of the board minutes from November fourteenth of 2024. You should all have had the board minutes to review. If there's any questions, we could ask about them. If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the board minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Ms. Allen?
Second.
Dr. Surrancey? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Next is the student government report. And she has not made the trip over, so we'll move past the good student government report to the presentation of the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are routine business, state directives, and/or compliance items. All items have been reviewed by the board attorney and have been available to the board for its examination. Any trustee can request a topic to be removed from the consent agenda and discussed further. Topographical errors will be noted and corrected in the board minutes. Are there any questions about the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Submove.
Mr. Medina?
Second.
Ms. Norris? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Passes. All right. Next item is academic affairs. Ms. Cieza-Voles.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to present updates on behalf of the academic affairs division. I am delighted to share that the spring 2025 semester has gotten off to a strong start with classes having begun yesterday. On Monday, we hosted a welcome back faculty meeting, and we were delighted to have a large number of engaged faculty in attendance. In addition, we have recently launched the inaugural edition of the FGC Academic Affairs Bulletin. In liberal arts and sciences, faculty and staff have been working diligently and collaboratively in response to a set of state-directed changes for both general education requirements and the associate in arts degree. Next week, we will launch a four-part meeting series with the General Education Review Committee that will ultimately make recommendations for our 2025-2026 catalog and related systems. In addition, this Saturday, January eleventh, we will be hosting a Brain Bowl tournament. And of course, we wish all our students and other academic contestants all the best with that endeavor. In workforce, career, and technical education, we are most pleased to announce that work is well underway, having started in December on the renovation of the HVAC facility. And this particular initiative is funded by a $1 million workforce incentivization capitalization grant. We're also pleased to share that the welding program has a 100% pass rate. Eleven out of eleven of our students on the American Welding Society certification exam. Commendations to our faculty and academic leaders with that achievement, as well, most especially, to our students. In the fall 2024 semester, our teacher preparation program served 330 students, thirty-three of whom graduated in December. As well, our associate in science degree in early childhood education has received recently its reaccreditation through the National Association for the Education of Young Children. Our nursing department recently hosted a new student orientation with a record 130 practical nursing and associate in science degree nursing students in attendance. In addition, our Bachelor of Science in Nursing program is welcoming 30 new students to the study. In our libraries and institutional effectiveness area, work is well underway with more efforts to come in terms of preparing the fifth-year SAC COC interim report due in September. And likewise, with the leadership of both Dr. Barrett and Christine Boatwright, we will soon begin convening a series of faculty, staff, and student focus groups in preparation for the upcoming strategic plan, which looks ahead to 2025 here through 2030. And likewise, the Center for E-Learning continues its commitment to supporting faculty in the design and delivery of student-centered courses. A particularly exciting collaboration involves one with Assistant Professor Orlando Macias Sanchez, who has developed an AI engine. An AI engine that can be integrated within faculty's Canvas shells and will be piloted this semester in four classes with an opportunity to incorporate it further through faculty professional development in other courses, providing both students and faculty alike with enhanced research and simple search capacities within the framework of their learning management system. We now conclude our report on behalf of academic affairs and respectfully invite any questions or feedback that you might have. Yes?
I have a question. Congratulations on the pass rate on the welding. That's impressive. Now, do those students, just out of curiosity, do they come with jobs already in place and their employers are sending them to this class? Or are they coming out and do they have placements immediately for that?
I know every time I talk to the business community, it's such a high need. So I was just curious as to what their placement rate is for jobs.
For that question, Trustee Norris, if I may turn to Dean Brady for guidance, please.
So most of them don't have jobs specifically in the welding field yet. Some do. A lot of them do have jobs. They do work if they go to school. Upon completion, yeah, we have almost 100% placement. Now, various, some will go into private, open their own business. But we have really strong ties with the actual union out of Jacksonville. And we've also been sending a few down to The Works down in the Gainesboro, Orlando area. So yeah, they've all been able to get work on the backend, especially the ones that go all the way through advanced level.
What kind of pay does that give them?
It ranges. I think starting in the union, you come out in the 50s to 60s. But that's because of the benefit package, right? That's the balance. A lot of them will choose to go into private only because you can make far more, but you lose out on the idea of benefits. So with the union, you go in as an apprentice and every year you're guaranteed a step raise. But it's more of a long-term picture. It's some to see that, but some want that immediate paycheck.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good news. Good news. All right. Next item is student affairs and public information. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Trustees. I'd like to start out by talking about our athletic program and the exceptional academic accomplishments we had at the end of the fall semester. We had a record-setting academic success with 11 student athletes achieving a 4.0 GPA. This represents the highest number of athletes attaining this milestone in a single semester since the reinstatement of athletics at FGC. The collective academic performance of our athletic program and our athletic teams remains strong. As reflected, the top five teams were women's golf with a 3.4 GPA, women's softball with a 3.2 GPA, esports 3.15, women's cross-country 3.0, and women's flag football 2.9, just missing a 3.0. Four out of our top five teams are on the women's side of the house, which is absolutely tremendous. I'm also pleased to report a low number of scholarship losses this semester. Only three student athletes were unable to maintain their scholarships due to academic reasons this year. So that was one of the lowest ever that we've had. In flag football news, London Jenkins and Tremisha Harris are both starting their spring 2025 semester in sunny San Diego, California this week as they've been invited to the U.S. National Team for Flag Football Training Camp. This opportunity is a major milestone for both of these athletes, and it's the first step toward achieving their dreams of representing our nation as part of the 2028 Olympic team. One day, we'll hear London Jenkins, LeBron James, Tremisha Harris, maybe all in the same sentence as they announce Team USA, and they walk in with a flag. On December seventh, we hosted the Jingle Bell 5K in support of our men's and women's cross-country teams. And I'm thrilled to share that we had a record-breaking 63 participants. This would not have been possible without the incredible dedication of April Moore, who led the charge as the event's organizer. A very special thank you goes to Casey Memes and our marketing department, as well as Lee Pinchuk and the foundation for their outstanding support, which directly contributed to our record-breaking turnout. I'd also like to express our gratitude to Columbia Drip Bar for ensuring that all our participants stayed hydrated and finished the event. It was a cold one out there, but even when it's cold, you have to stay hydrated. Thank you for all of your efforts in making this event such a success. In the past month, we issued two key press releases, one promoting the Spring 2025 One-Stop Enrollment Day and another celebrating Fall 2025 Graduation. Additionally, we captured moments from major campus events like the Jingle Bell 5K, nursing penning ceremony, new student orientation, and fall graduation. In talking to Stephen Colati, we took nearly 1,200 photos at graduation alone, and over 280 of those were shared online with graduates and their loved ones. Quick trio update. I'm thrilled to share that our 2023-24 Annual Performance Review results are in, and we earned a perfect 15 out of 15 on our scorecard. Additionally, our program's student persistence rate of 92% and academic standing rate of 99% are the highest in our program's history. The FGC Trio Program is currently funded to serve 140 students, and we are at full capacity. Congratulations to Liz McCardle, Shirley Miller, Kirsten Hammerly, and Kenzie Witt on all their hard work. And finally, just real quick. At 8:00 a.m. this morning, our dedicated student success staff and trio program helped kick off the new semester with what we call Maps and Munchies, an initiative designed to warmly welcome new and returning students to campus. Despite the frigid 34 degrees and a wind chill of 25 degrees and my best efforts to convince them to move indoors, their commitment to our students never wavered. They braved the cold to ensure everyone felt supported and ready for a successful start to the semester. Their dedication is truly commendable. I pleaded with them to go inside. I honestly did, but they wouldn't. But a lot of hot chocolate and coffee was given out today. And that concludes my reports. Are there any questions?
Questions? All right. Well, thank you very much. That was brave. Next item is enrollment and marketing. Ms. Memes?
Thank you. Good evening. As Dr. Cieza-Voles mentioned, classes began yesterday, January eighth, and our enrollment for spring looks good. We have 2,839 students registered compared to 2,585 students last spring. That's a 9.8% increase. And then for credit hours, we're at 26,898 credit hours compared to 23,422 credit hours last spring for a 14.8% increase. Add drop will continue through Tuesday of next week, so students will be changing their schedules, and we'll continue to promote later start classes. For the holiday session that we held from December 11th to January 7th, those numbers counted in spring enrollment, and students did take advantage of that. We had 100 students enroll in those classes that took place over four weeks. Financial aid and enrollment services, along with the Office of Advising, are offering late nights this week and next to help students that need assistance after 4:30, so they'll be open until 6:00 p.m. Upcoming financial aid event, we are hosting a FASFA workshop at Dixie County High School this upcoming Monday evening to help students and their parents complete the FASFA. We will be wrapping up our experience days this year with Trenton High School Experience Day on January 23rd. So far this academic year, we've hosted 330 high school students for experience days. One of our big projects that we've been working on recently is complying with the gainful employment regulations, specifically new reporting requirements of our gainful employment programs and students. The regulations are in place primarily for for-profit school accountability, but it does also apply to non-degree financial aid eligible programs that lead to an occupation. So that includes our institution. So we're going to provide all the data they need and program-level data, and then the DOE will assess the value of those programs for consideration of continued federal funding. So that's a big undertaking that our Office of Financial Aid, Enrollment Services, Institutional Research, Business Services, and Technology have been working on. On a more fun note, the next event in our Campus Vibe series is the New York-New York Dueling Piano Show that will take place in the Howard Center on February 14th, Valentine's evening. I couldn't get it out. Beginning at 7:30 p.m., we'll have hors d'oeuvres, desserts, and drinks, and a lot of entertainment with dueling pianos and song requests, and audience participation should be fun. Finally, in the audiovisual area, I mentioned the upgrades last time to the PAC, the audio in the PAC. But we'll also be installing a video wall that will cover the back of the stage, and that will take place in February. Additionally, AV set up esports broadcasting equipment for live streaming of esport matches, which is now available on Twitch. They've also transitioned the college channel to a digital broadcast, which allows expanded distribution through Comcast and improved quality. And that concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Question. Did you say the credit hours were up 14.8%?
Yes, ma'am.
So is that a big increase in dual enrollment? Or is it general population?
It's both. So we had an increase in dual enrollment. I think we have 100 more students than last spring.
Okay. I remember our dual enrollment was down a little bit.
It's coming back up.
Okay, it's back up, okay.
And we also have second chance Pell that we have this spring, and we didn't have it last spring. So that's about 60 FTE, yeah.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is business services report. Ms. Holloway.
Good afternoon. The college requests approval of Budget Amendment Number Five to the Restricted Current Fund, Fund Two, for the fiscal year 2425. This amendment recognizes revised award authorizations and new grants received in the 2425 fiscal year.
Any questions about Budget Amendment Number Five from Restricted Current Fund Two? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'll move to approve Budget Amendment Number Five.
Thank you.
Dr. Surrancey?
Second.
Ms. Allen? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Passes.
Thank you. The next amendment, we are requesting approval for Fund Seven, Budget Amendment Number Five, which has been revised so the report reflects actual revenue, revised budgeted expenditures, actual expenses, and updated projects through December 2nd, 2024.
Any question about Budget Amendment Number Five, capital outlay plan for Unexpected Plant Fund Seven? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Submove.
Second. Second, Norris.
Ms. Norris? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Passes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grab the phone with us. Dr. Tuffadino's on the phone. He couldn't make me have medical.
Hey, guys. Thank you so much for letting me call in. I'm so sorry I have family things tonight, but I definitely feel bad.
Well, I thought it was medical. I didn't know it was. I guess it was Kelly.
Yeah, my mic had signed up or something, and I forgot to add on the whole schedule. And I was like, well, this is not going to work. But I still wanted to be involved. I'll do my best to not be delinquent in the future.
All right. Next is President's Report. Dr. Barrett?
I want to thank trustee Brandon for getting here. I know you've had some issues, and I want to thank you yesterday for hosting the delegation meeting along with Senator Bradley on our campus.
Well, the one in Lottawell County I just came from lasted four hours, so I appreciate Columbia County moving on.
So I'm.
That is a crazy man to do that and then show up.
Happy New Year to all of you. I want to thank, I know Superintendent Mike Riplinger is here. He's cooking food for us for after this. I also want to thank Renee for coordinating this Union County. I do, before I get into my report, would like to request, and maybe we can do this at the end, if you're willing to do that, on the agenda, maybe adding something is, is I would ask that perhaps the next two meetings, we're going to be at Baker County and also Dixie County, that if we could, for the remainder of this year, if you'd be so gracious to hold them here in Lake City, because we don't have people coordinating that yet, and we haven't been able to find locations. So just keep that in the back of your mind, just to tidy up that situation. Amy had asked me to mention that. Or I could go down and make some fish down in Dixie. I don't think you'd want to eat it. But anyway, okay, we'll move on. Just to remind you a couple of things. I mentioned we hosted the Columbia County delegation meeting yesterday. We'll also be holding the annual Swanee River Water Management Conference on campus in late January. Our STEM building groundbreaking for STEM Two, the Grace and Al Harder Simulation Innovation Building, will be held on January 29th at 10:00 a.m. You should have invitations in their packets. We'll be highlighting, doing some groundbreaking. We'll be highlighting the Grace and Al Harder Simulation we donated for the main building. But we'll also be highlighting HCA of Lake City Hospital that have donated the wing for the simulation part of it. So that will be held, shouldn't be any longer than 10 or 15 minutes, and then we'll have a little celebration afterwards in the Student Union Building. I also want to highlight, I know the Vice President of Academic Affairs, Kathleen, mentioned about the HVAC building. So you know, put some context to that. That is the overhang. The new building will be the overhang behind the Automotive Technology Building. And the studs went up last week, and the steel is being put up currently. And the steel will be up by next Wednesday. And then the insulation company will be in the following week. And then the electricians will come in. And then our students and our faculty will design and build their own HVAC lab. And it's quite a bit bigger than the current facility. It'll be much nicer. The only part is they're going to put that nice floor in like they did in automotive that costs a lot of money. But anyway, I gave in again. But so that is going to be prepared, and that's really a savings, a significant savings, rather than building a whole nother building. Once that is done, that's part of the workforce incentivization grant that Kathleen mentioned. Then we will begin the renovation, the extreme renovations on the welding building, which will upgrade. We'll add additional, how many?
Thirteen more booths.
Thirteen more booths.
Plus the fabrication.
And plus the fabrication area of it. So we're really excited about that, and we're moving ahead. I want to thank Chris. I also want to thank Randy Thomas from the facility staff to making this all happen. The greenhouse project is almost completed also, the new greenhouses. Not new, they've been renovated after 15 or 20 years of neglect. Thanks to Chris and his staff and the faculty for doing that, and also facilities. And that should be completed in the next few weeks.
We're just waiting on some equipment.
Yeah. And so those are two issues. So once we get those done, it's been a kind of a busy, kind of, it's going to be a busy spring. We're going to get things done, and we'll get them done fast. STEM Two is anticipated, I will not, is anticipated to be open for fall. We'll see if that happens. But it's not as complex a building as we thought it is like STEM One. I mentioned to you last month about the tiny houses. We'll be having a prototype, one prototype tiny house come in February that we'll get to look at. The students will get to look at. Engineers will get to look at. We'll get to make sure that we do it the right way, the tiny houses. But we are progressing on that. And when we met with Senator Simon and Lee, who's the other?
Senator Caladyou.
Caladyou. I want to make sure I got. Thanks to Chuck, he was able to get them to come. They're both the chairs of higher education, and the other is the chair of K-12 education. And thanks to Chuck, leadership was able to get them here, and our lobbyists were able to get them here. And we also yesterday met with Representative Johnson, who replaced Chuck Clemens yesterday. So we've been busy on the legislative front also. I also want to give you that those are the good news. As always, I tell you, the good news. Oh, a couple more good news things. UF has invited us to apply for an agricultural grant, a huge agricultural grant that will have something to do with technology and AI. And so we're looking forward to doing that. We have lots of good ideas, and that's going to be a substantial grant. And they're looking to partner with two or three of the state colleges, community colleges. So we were one to do that. And we've also been asked to, invited to apply for a STEM grant that will really be helpful for our students and transfer into STEM-related fields through fellowships and so forth if we get that grant. So thank you, Kathleen, for that leadership on that. On a note that we're not getting very far is, and I'll turn this over to Megan in a minute, update on the city of Lake City. I've invited each of the council members to come to see the dam that's causing the problems individually. One has come. Unfortunately, publicly, the city says they haven't done it. And they publicly have said that I have an alternative motive why I'm saying they did it. So I just wanted to let you know that. So we are challenged. We've shown them Google Maps from 2013 to 2023, and it indicates no dam until 2022. So they're claiming the dam where something was built prior to 2013, and we're just complaining about it now. So that's it. So we're proceeding, and then I'll turn it over to Megan.
Thank you, Dr. Barrett. So as the board directed at the last meeting, I sent a letter to the city through its legal counsel. I sent that on November 25th. As we had discussed, it requested a reply with an action plan by the end of the year, December 31st, with the action plan to be completed in the next six to 12 months. I've had good communication with Mr. Martin. We met on December 20th. We reviewed the Google Photos. I actually went back out to the college and took current photos of its current, how it looks currently. And we've had good discussions. I guess the downside would be, as of right now, there is no action plan. There is some dispute or disagreement as to what was done, when it was done, and why it was done. And so I think we're still searching for answers before they're prepared to give us those action steps. But that's kind of where we are currently.
And then on a good note, I would like to ask, there's been some movement on, if you recall, a few years ago, we talked about the Lake Shore Hospital, the big building, the hospital building. And we were all thought about doing it, maybe not doing it. We went back and forth. But Lake Shore Hospital Authority at the time decided to move in a different direction. But at the time, they had said that there was potential to potentially donate other parcels of land or other facilities that they had. So I had reached out two months ago saying, I've heard a lot of going on with that, where are we at with that? And Lee and I took a tour of the two-story, former Randolph Building, two-story building, and also took a little tour of a few of the other buildings. And at this time, and we've talked to the delegation, the local delegation, about their thoughts to the delegation, the local delegation, about their thoughts about potentially having some new health-related fields there. We've talked about massage therapy, we've talked about others such as electric, about x-ray technician, sonography, we've talked about a lot of things. I think it's good timing, I've also talked to Dale Williams and few of the members of their board, and there seems to be some interest in donating one of those buildings or all the buildings to the college. And, you know, it's very early in those stages, but before we go any further, it's good timing for the college, because as we look at these new allied health professions that we're looking at trying to do, we will have to make some decisions on campus about how to facilitate facilities, or maybe use the facilities that are there, and the example. So, what I would look to is just as a consensus, I wouldn't ask for a motion tonight, should we continue to talk with Lake Shore Hospital Authority to do this.
So, everyone stops, if you have any.
What's the downside?
Yeah, you can just say what's the downside of talking to them.
There really isn't, but I just want to make sure that we're doing this, you know, everybody's on board as we move forward. I will say that there is some, I actually do think, and I'm not negotiating publicly, but I think, I think there is potentially some potential renovation money that potentially come with that also. And that building, I never saw the two-story building, it does suit our purposes, would serve our purposes as a lab.
It's very, it's very simple, it was just, you know, it's just exam rooms, and they have an elevator, which would...
An external elevator, which is, so, which is, but I mean, so, and it's in, it needs some little tender love and care, but I think that it's, it would potentially save significant money for building a whole nother building, quite frankly.
Yes, the only concern I would have, and this is way down the discussion path, is that depending on what they do with the big hospital, you know, you want to make sure it's a cohesive plan, so we don't end up there, and the next thing we know, that there's something that really isn't appropriate for our student base at that hospital, because, you know, if they decide to do something with it that's totally off, you know, off the radar on it, like, really, we don't want a college campus next to whatever they decide. So, that'd be the only thing in terms of question mark, but again, way far down the line in terms of discussion on that. I mean, do they have restrictions on what they can do with that hospital in terms of what kind of businesses that they can put...
Well, right now, they're very close to signing a, I think it's a 40-year reverter clause to turn the property over to Meridian.
Meridian, okay.
And so, that's currently, what that would act is a mental health facility, and Meridian during that whole process asked us to do some training for them, because they will be hiring about 170 mental health assistants, they call them, which are really kind of assistants to help the psychiatrists and so forth. So, there is some potential there too. My concern was the parking issue, so that does come with the buildings, that parking, they have their own separate parking, so there would be enough parking, but the zoning issues, there's been some zoning issues that I don't know that much about, but I just know the public zoning issue for that area, if it's a public use space, schools count and colleges count, so I don't think we'd have a zoning issue. I do agree with you on that, there's a lot of jockeying for buildings and so forth there, so.
I mean, you know, I think, you know, as a resident, you know, we want something that is accretive and is going to bring more traffic downtown, positive traffic, and a campus, a medical campus makes a lot of sense there, but again, since, you know, they're kind of piecemealing, you know, it out, you've got to know what the whole strategic plan is.
And I don't think they have one, so.
I know, that's, like I said, it's a long way off in the discussions, but, you know, just so the people, rest of the board knows, is they don't really have a strategic plan for the whole campus, they have sort of a piecemeal plan.
I would say from a strategic plan, from the institution, as we look at strategic, that if we did get the building, and we do things a little bit quicker than others, that if we had, if we could obtain that by fall, we could probably get those programs implemented sooner than later, than waiting on campus. So, that's just a positive from my perspective, so.
Coming, trying to visualize, coming from the courthouse around, toward the old hospital building, which building is it?
So, you have to, well, the way they have that...
They go the other way.
You got to go, so you go past the hospital, and it's the building on the left-hand side that's closest to the lake. And actually, if you clear out all the shrubs in front of it, it's probably a nicer view of the lake and from the distance than it would be the main hospital, if you did it that way.
Did you say they already have, there was a PT place across the street from the hospital?
We actually looked at that because...
Did they already leave that one out to somebody else at this point, or?
Yeah, well, they're actually Palm's, the actual public issue is they're going to sign in agreement with Palm's Medical Group to put a medical facility in there.
Okay, so they are at least keeping it...
That's what, the two buildings are available is the administrative building, which is the current administrative building for Lake Shore Hospital, and that building are the two buildings available. Concern I do have with the main building is, is when I look at it, and remember only this much dangerous, is that it will be difficult to adapt that building into a classroom because of some of the way they structured it. So, that's why I need more information about it, so, as we go down there.
It's old and hasn't been maintained in the last, what, how long have they been exited? How long has Shan's been gone from there?
Four years. Actually, the equipment in there is pretty good, they have a lot of x-ray equipment.
They're supposed to be maintained.
Yeah, they are, they're, what is not working is the elevator, so the thing is, that's, I already checked that out. I went over it pretty heavy, so.
Take the stairs.
All right, any other comments or thoughts? I guess the consensus is, is perfectly fine, Lou Thorpe, we're talking.
And Mr. Chair, that's my report.
All right, well, thank you.
I do have a question for Megan as a practical measure.
Sure.
So, when we're talking about this dam and the destruction or the potential concerns, what's the financial impact overall of fixing it?
I think we don't know that.
I guess that's where I'm kind of coming from, is like, would it make sense to have some kind of a idea of what it is? Because again, partly, if I'm the city, I'm thinking, like, I'm not putting myself on the hook, because I'm going to, I'd rather stall, 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 not be on the hook for it, because I don't know what it's going to cost, but then again, it may not even be that much, and we may sit here going, you know, just let's get it done ourselves, or, you know, who cares who's, who's responsibility is, it's really impairing us and causing problems, and it may not be that much in the terms of, you know, like, fighting about whose responsibility is, when it may not be a lot of money at the end of the day, I don't know.
I've suggested we blow it up.
Are we talking $10,000 or $100,000, you know?
If we, I mean, I don't know how detailed we want to get into this.
I don't know, so I have no frame of reference, and it's sort of like, some days owning your own problems is a great way, you know, it's the best way to just be done with it.
Yeah, Warehouser owned the property in 2013. At the time when the city built, and this is only Larry Barrett's version of it, so, and I'm not making any accusations, so in 2013, Warehouser owned the property, at the time, the city was building the water plant, the Price Creek Water Plant. At the time, and this is where, I'm not going to say my opinion on this, they said that there was a wetland in this property, in the five and a half acres, and that they needed to bring it back to the wetland status, the original wetland status. So, out of one-third of the five acres had to be restored. At the time, it looks like what they did was they dug a trench, and they had the, and the water coming through this, our property then. In 2015, we had the property donated from Warehouser to the college, it was transferred to the college. There was always problems with water retention there, full, but we've shown in the Google Maps, and then in 2022, they built the dam. The city built the dam. And we're trying to find out how much, we're trying to get the public information of who did it, we believe we know who did it, and the thing is, they built the dam. The problem with this whole thing is, and I think it's as simple as a saw, cutting it down another six inches, and it makes it go away. Really, that's how simple it is. However, I believe that Swanee River Water Management will get involved and so forth, because it was a wetland. So, I think that's the complication, why the city doesn't want to do, well, all we want to do is fix it. That's, I mean, the bottom line is, we just want it fixed, and it seems like it's a simple fix to me, so, I agree.
And so, again, why, why is it such a big, I mean, I get the wetlands issue, but again, regardless of who owns the problem, how expensive is the fix, and what do you have to do to fix it? In terms of regulatory issues?
Sure, and I don't think we know, you know, construction-wise, what the fix is. I think the problem is, or the bigger concern is, the ability to perform that fix based on the wetlands, and what existed and/or what should exist as mitigation, and I think that goes back to some of the permitting, you know, what we've found so far is, it was permitted, at least a project was permitted by the city in 2013, but anything after that, especially 2022 when that dam was built, we have not yet seen any documents evidencing permitting or approval to do that. And so, I think therein lies the problem, that if it wasn't permitted to begin with, or that specific construction wasn't, how do we now go back and permit the fix? Again, in conjunction with the wetlands and the mitigation that's required and things like that. So, I don't think it's, I'm with you, it would be great to know the financial implication of the construction itself, but I think the bigger problem is, can we proceed, can we do it based on permitting?
Can we get it permitted?
And that's exactly, and again, keeping in mind the wetlands that should be there and are there.
Should we pursue some discussion with Swanee Manager, Swanee Water Management, to just say, what's the permitting process, and then if we run into, what's the definition of saying, we keep trying to deal with the city, and next thing you know, there's going to be more changes at the city, and we're going to be starting over and over again. So, I just sort of like, if it's really impacting us, and we don't know what the financial impact is, then we're, to me, we're sort of like just spinning our wheels. And secondly, if, if we can get it permitted, one of two things, then it would be easy for the city to say, look, it's easy to get it permitted, we already talked to Swanee Water Management, and this is what you need to do, and let's get it done, and we'll work, we'll work side by side with you. Or we just say, you know, forget it, let's own our own destiny, let's just get it done ourselves, you know, it's our campus that's being impacted, it's causing us more damage in the long run.
Spend a lot of money and time on this.
Well, and that's kind of where I keep coming back to, it's like, I really don't know what the, other than trying to figure out who's accountable for it, what's the financial impact? It's almost like when you're trying to settle a lawsuit, and you've got insurance, and your insurance people are telling you, it's going to cost you more to litigate it is, even if you're right, you know? So, I wonder if it's worth some time to explore some of that, just a thought.
Absolutely, and I'll pick up on that.
I'm that person, so everybody else can weigh in, but I'm just sitting here going, like, we've been talking about this a long time.
Sure.
And I just, you know, I'm not confident we're going to get a change in ownership responsibility from the city, and meanwhile, we still have problems on our campus that are being caused, and who knows what the real, the next impact will be, it might be even worse if we have a big rainstorm or flood or whatnot.
I agree with Susan, I think that we may get, I think Water Management District may get on our side and push this thing along, and, you know, regardless of who's owns it or whatever, they may come in and say, all right, you got to, we got to get this fixed, and if the city did it, you know, doesn't matter, we want it done, we want it fixed, and so, which benefits us, from what I understand, right? So, yeah, I think that talking to Water Management District...
It's worth exploring, and all we could do is say, hey, it's, they want, it's going to cost $500,000 to fix, forget it, now we have to go back over to the city, but we may find out it's really one of these things where we're spending more time and money trying to get them to do something than it would be just to pay to get it done and move on and be done with them. And, you know, again, in the Court of Public Appeal, they're going to spin things their way regardless of what the facts might say, right? And, you know, we still have to go out and off-desk leave, you know, he's out there collecting money from donors all the time about things, right? You know, we're basically saying, we got a piece of property from a donor that's created a problem for us, right? Okay, I mean, that's not a, you know, we don't want to be, look gift horses in the mouth either, right? So, I just think maybe information would be helpful to know what's really the cost and what's the process to fix it. It might actually help the city do something if they know it's really not a big deal, all you need to do is just, you know.
Yeah, I think that's going to, that's very lawyerly of you. That's very lawyerly of you, I like that.
I'm a pragmatic person.
What's it made of? What's it, dam, is it earth?
Concrete.
Concrete, and you can tell the difference between a concrete thing from 13 years ago and less than two years ago.
If something happened to it on its own, and it was creating, you know, like, it just mysteriously somehow, who, you know, who's going to come and who's going to yell at whom, right?
Well, it's like a traffic accident, you get out and you never admit fault.
Right.
That's kind of one, yeah.
And I'm not a lawyer.
Is that your legal advice to us, too, when we ever get in an accident?
Yep, that's the police's advice, never admit fault.
All right, so that's a, that's a plan, I think Megan can work with that. Do we need to address what you said about the next two meetings in Lake City? Having them in Lake City, are they scheduled to be, what, in Baker and Dixie?
Yeah, the ones in Baker and Dixie.
So, we'd have to just publish, right?
We just publish it, we publish it as we would.
So, everyone agree that it's okay to have our next meetings, or continue to have our next meetings in Lake City rather than Baker and Dixie? Anyone have a problem with that?
Well, I apologize, with David Crawford gone and me in Tallahassee this time of year, I apologize for not being a better host.
We understand.
I used to just bring you to the sheriff's office, I think.
All right, topics for future meetings, anyone have any topics for future meetings? If not, yes? Dr. Tappadino?
No, actually, I was going to, I was going to comment saying, no, I don't, but, on a side note, Chuck, let's not diminish how amazing and how busy you have been this session with everything going on, so thank you for being an advocate for our board, and thank you for representing us, just faithfully as you guys have. I know yesterday was a busy day, and we're so blessed to have everybody on this board. I'm excited about 2025, and again, I'm sorry I wasn't able to be there for y'all, for everybody, but I'm looking forward to a really good year, I think it's going to be awesome.
Yep, thank you, not a problem, glad, glad you could call in. Okay, the warrant register is available for inspection, if anyone wants to take a look at that. Our next meeting will be on February 13th at 5:00, at the, at the boardroom. Superintendent Rippling, you weren't here, I called you out at the beginning of the meeting, but you weren't in, we really...
I'm used to being called.
I did it in a positive way. But we, we appreciate you hosting us here tonight, Ms. Allen, we are always happy to be here and look forward to a fine meal, and want to give you an opportunity to say a few words before we adjourn.
Well, we're just grateful that we're able to host you guys, and we look forward to doing that each and every year, and thank you for all the Florida Gateway College does for the students and the residents of Union County, and we greatly appreciate it, and hopefully the meal will be palatable tonight. If it is, I cooked it, if not, I'll blame it to somebody else. But I do appreciate it, and of course, you know, Ms. Allen is a mainstay here in Union County, and I know she has been with Florida Gateway for quite some time, and she reached out about it, and again, I said absolutely, so looking forward to doing it each and every year, just put us on your books, and we'll be happy to host. We really appreciate it, we always like to have fun here, we always like to eat, so, thank you very much.
All right, if there's nothing else, I will declare this meeting adjourned.